Well, we'll kick off our study session this afternoon. We have Mr. Randy Nunamaker here to tell us all about construction. Exciting things on the horizon.
Yeah, exciting for sure. So, Board President, Mr. Christensen, Superintendent Whitney, and Board members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide a 2017 bond construction update. The purpose for tonight's study session is to provide information regarding the impact of escalating construction costs and outline the approaches identified by the construction team for cost savings. So to start, first, I would like to take a moment and introduce the bond construction team, some of who are represented here tonight. So we'll start with Brandon Wilm, Principal, and also Matt Whiteish, who's not here tonight, project architect with Design West Architects.
Can you like raise your hand or something so we know?
Mr. Wilm.
Thank you.
And his design team, they bring well over 20 years' worth of experience in over 40 school projects, including multiple local projects, and currently responsible for the design and architecture on Elementary 16 and Elementary Number 17 for the Pasco School District. And then we have also with us Doug Mitchell, who's the Principal for MMEC. Walt Huffman also works with them, project manager, Marion Evans in design. And then Dan's here tonight also, Kripone, and architect for MMEC Architectural. Mr. Mitchell and his team have completed well over 30 new schools and a number of those in the tri-city area. MMEC is currently working on Middle School Number Four and Stevens Middle School for the Pasco School District. Not with us tonight, we work with John Heinley, who's the OSPI Eastern Washington Regional Representative for OSPI. We do have with us tonight Paul Knutson of Knutson Engineering. He's worked multiple school projects throughout the tri-city area and is currently providing civil engineering on Middle School Number Four and Elementary Number 17 site. Also with us, we have Doug Carl, Principal with Alliance Incorporated. Mr. Carl has constructed 15 new schools and multiple other projects for the Kennewick School District. And worked as capital projects director for Kennewick School District and is now working with the Pasco School District on OSPI support, funding, and construction management. Mr. John Morgan of Evergreen Associates, who's not with us tonight, has worked on five district new school projects when he was with the district and will be project manager on the two middle schools. Also with us tonight, we have Kevin Sullivan, who has acted as interim executive director of finance for the Pasco School District. Also Kevin Hebden, the executive director of fiscal services for the Pasco School District, has been a part of the team reviewing the funding and the process we're using for recommendations tonight. And they'll continue to review the bond team's recommendations for funding in the future. And then we also have with us Robin Hay, planning principal for Elementary 16 and Elementary 17, providing support in the furniture and equipment area for both schools, as well as naming and branding support. She'll be looking at cost savings for the elementary schools. So as part of the background for the presentation tonight, it's important to note that the bond construction team has already met twice as a group on September 5th to review information regarding construction cost escalation, and again on September 19th to provide information on steps that will be taken to address any impacts to our construction projects. For some construction cost escalation examples, the district received our base bid for Elementary 16 on July 27, 2018. The bid, while higher than expected, was within bond budget, and the district accepted the bid from Fowler Construction for $20,000,416,000. The district received an initial estimate on Elementary 17 in August of 2018 of $23,609,577. This estimate included additional site work that didn't need to be done on Elementary 16. However, the budget was, or that estimate was still about 2.5% higher than what we had budgeted for Elementary 17. This is what kind of brought it to our attention, that there'd been some construction cost escalation that may impact our projects. Keep in mind, these are estimates, and they're early estimates, and we anticipate through the design development and construction specification processes that these cost estimates will be reduced. The district began gathering information on what's impacting the costs. As you can see listed, there are many factors. A few I would specifically like to call to your attention are the steel increases, roughly 12.3%, which have been discussed, and possibly being discussed again for another price increase in January. Prevailing wages increases in Franklin County, just a couple of examples. Low voltage technicians went from $11.50 an hour in August to $41.22 an hour in September. Landscape labor went from $15.09 per hour to $37.19 per hour. Those are just a couple of examples in those areas. Transportation fuel costs nationally are up by about 52.8%. Construction costs are being impacted, the fear over the tariffs that are coming up. Costs are rising and escalating because of that. Finished materials such as carpet, tile, and vinyl are running about 10% to 25% higher. Normally, a construction cost escalation would be between 4% and 4.5% is what we would anticipate. However, according to Thomas Consulting, we're currently looking at at least 6% now, and still that or more moving forward. The bond construction team agreed the following steps would need to help to mitigate the escalation construction costs and provide the district more flexibility in the current So the approaches that we talked about, the first approach would be to move up the bidding timeline for Middle School Number Four to March, and move up the Elementary Number 17 bidding timeline to May. We'd be looking at a late March or early bid, or excuse me, April construction start date for Middle School Number Four. The cost savings for the early bids would be estimated to be around $200,000 plus per school by doing that. With the earlier bid schedule, Middle School Number Four would be in line to be completed in August of 2020, potentially saving a year of construction cost escalation. The district will also build into its bidding alternates, and with that, construction documents to allow for more district flexibility in awarding the bids, and will best meet the district's budget and allow completion at a later date if needed. The district has worked with the finance department to look at district funding support if needed. The identified funding sources included bond interest, impact fees, and then the capital The district will continue to practice, the practice of looking at value engineering recommendations where appropriate to keep costs down. The district recently had school furniture vendors at the district so teachers and administrators could review the furniture to better standardize our purchases to reduce costs at both the elementary schools and the middle schools. We will be working with technology and curriculum on relocating existing materials where appropriate. Technologies moved to one-to-one devices will help with this process, along with moving unused curriculum materials to the new schools. Some critical components of the recommendations are especially timing. Timing to take advantage of the early bidding and construction is important. We will be working with the city on site plans and approvals so that we can begin early grading of the Burns Road site in January, similar to what we have done at Elementary 16 and Curie Elementary. With the grading package completed, construction on Middle School Number Four would begin in April with occupancy in August of 2020 rather than 2021. The district will follow the normal de-form process for the state and for board approval. Timing of district funding support will be important when there is a need for construction funding support. There are some cost savings we will expect to see as we work through the design development process and the construction specifications become more refined. So for the next steps, the district will continue to plan for the accelerated bidding and the Middle School Number Four construction timeline while continuing to look for additional cost savings. Once the construction team finalizes the alternates for bidding, the district will make sure there is flexibility to take advantage of cost savings where appropriate. The main impact of this plan is the change of the completion date for Middle School Number Four from August of 2020, or excuse me, from August of 2021 to August of 2020. The district finance team supports the construction team's funding plan and district funding options for bond interest, impact fees, and the capital budget. And finally, the construction team will review the project and cost estimates and provide ongoing board updates once all estimates, costs, and alternates and value engineering are in. In closing, I would like to thank the team for their work to identify cost-saving measures and continued work on the Pasco School District's bond projects. And so with that, thank you, and I would open up for questions, comments, or information you might want.
The elementary school on Burns is slated to open on 2020 as well, right?
That's correct.
So is that going to be difficult, having two schools being built on the same site? Or is it going to be, seems like there'd be some things that'd be easier about it, and some things more difficult if they could coordinate efforts, but...
So, yeah, so you're exactly right. One of the things that's, Paul Knutson with Knutson Engineering is responsible for the site and the off-site engineering. That's why those are combined, so he will be doing all the site work to get those ready. He's doing all the design work with that, working with the city on getting all the permits and everything we need to have to do that. So that will be done as a package and bid as a prepackage, very similar to what we did for, we did the same thing for Elementary 16, we did the same thing for Curie. We're just bumping that up. We believe we can get some of the site grading done, started in January, get that done by March, so bidding Middle School Number Four in March, we can start construction probably in April, and we can have that site ready to go to start that. We'll still be completing some of the roadwork around it, the off-site work, similar to what we're doing right now. We just got the Massey Drive paved on Elementary 16, and so the same thing is happening there. So it wouldn't be a huge change, larger site, but wouldn't be a huge change from what we've been doing.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you go back to one of those first few slides with the cost escalation? I'm wondering if we can have a little more details or just a brief discussion on especially the wage increase? You know, if you look at the cost of materials, it's like, okay, you know, we, I can see that, and there's lots of issues nationally, internationally, that can affect some of these, the cost of these materials, if you've been following national news. But the wage increase, I mean, if you look at the materials, we're talking, you know, 10%, 12%, okay, this wage increase for the technician, I mean, we're talking a 300% increase, and so can we, can we have some more details on that?
Yeah. We're going to look into that. We're going to find out what more. These are just the initial. I have a couple of other ones that are about the same percentage increase from, you know, 200%, 300% increases in their, in their costs. The reasoning behind that, I've been told, is that they were so far behind that when they went to catch them up, it was a huge increase. I haven't vetted that out yet to make sure, but when I do that, I'll bring that back to you, and I can, I can get that information to you. This is, the prevailing wage information is all on the Labor and Industry site, and what they allow you to do, you have to look at Franklin County, because every county gets, has, has a difference as far as their wage settings are. So when you go on their site, you can click on Franklin County, you go to whatever trade it is that you think you need to look at. You can go back and you, the key would be to look at August of 2018, and then shift over to September of 2018. And that's when you'll see these differences. You'll see in September, it was 1509, you flip, or excuse me, August 1509, then you go over to September, and it's 3719, is what they jumped up to. And so that's what we have to pay, is we have to pay prevailing wage. So that's the contractors then have to calculate that into their costs.
Yeah, that'd be great if we had more information on that. I'm curious to see exactly what happened. One of my guesses is that this has been a kind of a longstanding thing. If we look at how the, what happened as far as teacher pay in the last year and legislative changes, as far as injecting more money into education budgets, I imagine that there's a similar issue here where we just don't have enough laborers, tradesmen, you know, so essentially, they're being highly underpaid considering the supply and demand aspect of that. And so I think if we look at the big picture of this, it's a good wake-up call as far as on a broader picture of the educational system and the mistake, I believe, in our country, and I mean, certainly not just in our district, but throughout our country, and really pushing everyone to go to college, four-year university, you gotta have this, and when in reality, that's not the case and not necessary for many people. And I think it's the wrong message to send to kids that are very interested in working with their hands doing these specialized trades and that now are going to be able to make good money. I think it's the wrong message we send to kids, trying to essentially indoctrinate them that they have to go to a four-year university, they have to get a, you know, a degree at a university to be successful in life, and that's just simply not the case. And so I think we really need to reevaluate that message that we send in our country
So we are going to pull in our design schedule three months? What was, I mean, site engineering probably more than that, but... So any, any risk in doing that?
No risk. Risk in everything we do.
I'm sure there is. I shouldn't say is there risk, certainly there is. We've accounted for that. I mean, I mean, we get in a hurry, we make a mistake that ends up costing us more than it would have had we...
Well, we've, we've been talking about this kind of approach, the possibility of this approach for many, many months, so we, it's not like we're, like we've lost three months out of, out of six months. You know, we may have lost six, three months out of 12 months or whatever, so we kind of, the original schedule was kind of...
So you're ahead of schedule now from what you anticipated, and this is just pulling it in a little further. So I think, I mean, certainly, opening that school a year earlier is appealing to all of us, just, and if we're ahead of schedule now, I, I'm just trying to get a sense of you're comfortable with the accelerating this schedule from the design side and getting it, getting it done and getting it done accurately and so that we can get...
Yep.
But we are ahead of schedule at this point, it sounds like, and, I mean, I like this approach. I think if we can do this, I mean, you know, construction costs, I'm sure, are going to be up and down, and we just, who knows? Maybe if we wait a year, the market'll have tanked, and we, we would have saved even more, but, but...
Unlikely.
Given, yeah, given, given the way things are going, it's probably not going to happen that soon, so I'm all in favor of this. I don't think I heard anything about Stevens.
Stevens would stay on its normal timeline. It would still bid in June, July, and it would still open in 2021, or, excuse me, it would be occupied January of 2021, and then be, the site would be complete for the opening of August 2021.
So is the, you guys are doing Stevens as well, right? Both Middle School Four and Stevens. Is that being pushed out to accelerate this one?
Same schedule, it was kind of always on.
And Stevens was supposed to be completed in 2022, correct? 21?
It will be occupied in January of 2021.
Okay.
And then it will, the site work then, and once the kids move in in January 2021, then they'll start the demolition of the old building and the site work for that, and the goal is to have all the site work and everything, all the fields put in for the start of the school year, August of 2021.
I had a question.
Sure.
On the difference between Elementary School 16 and 17, there's a $3.2 million difference between those two, and we said, and they're being built a year apart. And we're saying 6% on $20 million should be like $1.2 million. Where's the other $2 million? Is it, is it the base materials, or it's not in this escalation portion? So why does it cost $3 million more dollars to build Elementary 17?
So as I mentioned, when we received this in August of 2018, this was the initial one. I can tell you, this was the initial that drove the district looking at, saying, we need to take a deeper look into this and see what's driving our costs up, because we need to address that with our bond budget. We've already looked at this, and Brandon, you can, you can speak to this if you, if you'd like to. That cost is already, through the, looking at design, looking at alternates, those kind of things, that cost is already starting to come down, and we anticipate that, because it's just an estimation, an initial estimate, it will continue to come down as we do more value engineering, we do the construction specification, that will continue to come down. That's what we anticipate. One of the big differences between the two sites was for Elementary 16, we don't have near the, the site excavation work on 16 that we will have on Elementary 17. So that was a large portion of that increase, involved a lot of the site work that has to be done there. And so when I mentioned that, it was, you know, not all of that cost is escalation. Some of that cost additional is escalation plus the site work, the additional site work that's going to have to be done because of the amount of dirt, we're going to have to move on that site.
Did we not...
Go ahead, Amy.
Did we not anticipate that additional site work? Or we did? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, we anticipated the, the estimate for Elementary 17 is higher than, our estimate for Elementary 17 is higher than Elementary 16.
What was the estimate for 16? Do you remember?
16 was just under, I believe it was under $20 million, and then 17 was around $21, plus our contingency, so...
But didn't the, didn't the bid come in under the estimate? Wasn't there another estimate on 16?
On 16? Yeah, it came in under our, 16 came in under, yes.
So we're comparing, we're comparing the bid number with the estimate, bid number on 16 with the estimate on 17. I don't know what they, I don't know what the estimate was on 16. That number's not up there, but...
Right, right. It was just a, it was a little bit higher. I can get you that number exactly, but...
Saying that we're...
Yeah, it was just a little bit more.
When we come in with a bid, it's probably going to be, hopefully, it's under the estimate.
Yeah, we were in the, we were on budget with 16. This one came in, like I said, estimated about 2.5% more. Of course, I never want to be more, that's, that raises a flag. So that's when we started to look at the costs and say, let's make sure, because we have two middle schools to build too, so...
Hopefully, the estimate was conservative. We don't want to...
Oh, yeah.
And as we refine that, those numbers should...
Absolutely.
...all end a little better.
Greg Thomas, the estimator that both MMEC and Design West use, he's been a part of the team. He's come down and he's met with us. We've had those conversations. One of the comments that, that he made is, in his 25 years of estimating, he has never seen, had a more difficult time trying to get a finger on what's going to happen and how, what to look at even six months down the road. What are we going to be looking at? It's, it's just a very difficult time right now.
So is the, a couple million dollars, am I hearing you say that it would, it's just going to cost a couple more million dollars to build 17 and 16 because of the dirt work? Regardless of escalation, there's, there's, because the escalation is 6%. If we're building two identical schools, it's a million, a million, 1.2. There's a difference of three there. Is the majority of that remaining two in dirt work? Or are we building Elementary School 17 to different specs?
No, no. Elementary 17 is built to the same specs as the other one. Again, this is an estimate. I think, I think Steve said it...
Can you just give me an estimate of how much dirt work, what's the difference in dirt work? Is it...
I can get you that information. I have, I can get to you.
How much is dirt work at Elementary 16?
I don't have the number.
He didn't do 16.
But roughly, I mean, but I, I mean, I know one thing that I could add to this, we're talking about dirt work. Dirt work's just one component, yeah. Now, it's a crop circle, and there's a big ledge in between the bigger parcel to the west and the smaller parcels to the east where the elementary schools go. We've got to go in and move 80,000 yards of dirt. I don't know exactly how many yards they have to move at the other side.
Yeah, but we're talking, what, a million bucks total for...
Probably not that much for the dirt work itself, but maybe...
So the $2 million is, yeah.
There is, too.
No, I'm just saying that, it's not dirt work. We're not doing $2 million worth of dirt work.
No.
I was just trying to resolve the difference when we say 6% difference, and then the difference between the two is 15%.
It's hard to resolve an estimate...
What's a bid?
SD or DD phase of the project. Like I said, the projects continue to get further designed and...
Refined.
The estimates come in tighter based on better information because the project is now more refined. And so that number should come down. However, that's the number we have right now to work with, and we have to deal with that. We don't know for sure, and so you have to be cautious.
I think the other thing, too, this, that 6% is just a, an annualized number. I mean, it could be 12% today, it could be 2% tomorrow. I mean, it just, it really depends on what you're using, and you're conservative.
You can't err on that.
Right. So, and I think, you know, as we get refined, hopefully, that number does come down, but we would not expect it to go up unless there's another big change in material costs or wages.
So there's, I know there's cost savings because we are coming in approximately over, what, 2.5 million over budget? Is how much is, how much are we over budget right now at these two schools?
Over budget.
You mean over the...
Well, right now, the bond budget, we're 2.5% over the bond budget for Elementary 17.
17, yeah. That's about $600,000 over, the difference is about $600,000 between all our construction costs, our estimated construction cost and contingency and the, what the estimate came in at.
Okay.
So we're 17.
I'm a little, oh, sorry, I'm a little concerned, too, that we start, we start escalating, things go more and more expensive anyway, that we're going to keep, and I'm sure we will, but we're going to keep the quality there that we need to, and not undermine that in trying to save money.
So yes, absolutely. So that's the goal. That's why we look at value engineering, that's part of it. When they look at things, how can we do some cost-saving measures? An example of that that we've had is like, we need to have the playground ready for the kids to play on in August, so we'll put sod out there. We may consider putting sod, you know, and having it all done, and that's great, but however, if we want to save some money, then we're going to go out maybe into the front of the school where we, we're going to plant grass, we'll seed it instead of sod it, and we can save money by doing that. That would be an example of value engineering, in a way that they would say, here's an opportunity for you to save money. Now, they would also come back and say, we'll just hydroseed your, your playfield, too, in July, but it wouldn't be ready to play on in August. So we're not going to do that. We'll make sure that we have grass for the kids to play on. But we'll, we'll take advantage of those things that we can use to save money where we can. Does that make sense?
And I may have misheard this, but to help me understand another estimate, I think I heard that by moving, by moving the Middle School Four up, we'd save $200,000?
It's, it's, again, that's an estimated number, that's a rough number, but right around there.
So then resolve, resolve, how do we resolve the differ, resolve for me the difference between 6% annually and, and what does a middle school cost, 40 million?
Complete.
So 6% on the 40 million would be 2.4 million, but we're saying our estimate is 200,000 saving. What's, what's the difference there?
Yeah, that's just for the first year, moving the bid date up. That's just moving the bid date from May, from July to March.
So the project's going to be completed a year earlier. So if we save 6% on 40 million, it's 2.4 million. If we save 6% on a portion of that 40 million, it's less than that, but why, why so low? Why is it only going to save 200,000?
We only get four months worth of savings. We're moving to July to March. That's the saving.
That's the savings that I was talking about, was just July to March.
The saving is on bid day. Under the old schedule, we would have been theoretically finished with the school way before, never that 2021.
August 2021.
The school's going to open a year early, but we're not moving the whole thing here. We're only moving it up four months, and so that 200,000 is a guess. We're only moving it up four months, and so that, that 20,000 is a testament of what we'd save moving in four months.
And again, you know, what will happen is, is as this starts to play out, we get our first bid back for civil, when we bid that out, we'll be able to take a look and see where our estimate was, based on what the actual bid was, when we go out to bid in March or early April when we do that. Then again, that'll be a real tell sign of where we're at and what we can do and what, what elementary 17 and Stevens Middle School will look like. I guess what I'd like to say right now is, and I just, you know, because, you know, it is concerning when you start to see those costs come up, and I get the reports in, by the way, I do have the documents where I got this information from, so if anybody wants to look at it, they can see where, where that information, and information came from. But it, you know, it was concerning to us, that's why we took a look at it. That being said, as we're looking at everything right now, we see no reason that the schools aren't going to get completed. They're going to get completed with what we need to have, with all the classrooms, with all the gyms. We're going to do that. We just need, right now, we need to look at how we can have a positive impact that upfront, and not, not take any action now and just let it play out on its own. We want to be proactive. We want to take a look at what we can do. We want to take advantage of the opportunities that are available to us now that in six months will be gone. We won't be able to go back and get these opportunities again.
So just a quick sum, to quickly summarize, since people may listen, aren't as familiar with all this information, the bond, in the bond, we have a contingency for cost escalation. So we plan into the bond, the school may cost this amount of money, but there's actually an amount included in that for an escalation of costs, right? But this is just, the cost escalation is, has exceeded our estimate in that. And, and how do you, how do you plan for a 300% increase in your labor? I mean, that's like unreal, and I'd really like to see the details of that. My question is around that as well. Do we see the same issue, because this is saying it's specific to Franklin County and Benton County and other areas in our state, or is this, is Franklin County the worse-off area? Or is, do you see, since a lot of our, a lot of the, those here have worked with other school districts and other counties, is this the same issue that they're facing, or are we much worse off in Franklin County at this time?
So I would say this, the information I have is based on Franklin County. I haven't gone far enough to research the other counties. Have you? But these guys deal with it all the time, so have you, are you seeing it other?
There's, there's some similar type, type of stuff, and these are probably the most extreme, by far the most extreme examples of those.
Sure, so like, not all the labors are going to be 300% increased, but there's, it's an extreme example, but they're certainly all going to be increased, right? Because it's some, some degree.
Yeah, the majority of them are more typical, you know, the average percentage that goes up.
Yeah, these, those numbers are, I'm sure those are unique. I mean, we're talking barely above minimum wage to $41.
Yeah, we were...
It's like they weren't hiring union workers before, and now we are required to hire union. I'm sure there's something in there that's...
The, the low voltage technician is, is, you know, the way it was explained to me, a lot of those folks are the folks that pull the cable, the network cable. And so as I'm talking about that right now, I'm looking at Mark, because that is his world and the technology world, and the impact that's going to have on what he does. It's not just going to impact new construction, it will impact the work that Mark and Glenn and the technology group does also.
So, right, so we're talking about, I think we were looking at a two-year construction schedule previously, starting in like August of 19 and going to August of 21. And now we're, we're shortening that up considerably from April to August, so 16 months or so?
16 months.
Is that, is that an issue on a middle school? I think...
No.
So...
I think the price would be that better, but, but we, yeah, that's...
We're confident that...
The two, two years to build a middle school was, was way over, you know, over, over what's needed. Yeah, what did, what did the two, Kennewick?
Yeah, so the two we did in Kennewick were a 15-month schedule and then an 18-month schedule. We wanted to raise them on an 18-month schedule, but 15 months is difficult, especially with the site work being done early.
Okay. And as, as far as bidding, so it seems like we've bid most of ours in the summer timeframe, and now we're talking about doing it in the spring. Is, are others, what's the competition in spring? Is it, I think most districts, don't they do that typically in the June, July timeframe as far as bidding? And are we, are we...
Typically, we've done it in the July area, is that June, July is typically when we bid it. I think many districts go for earlier than, than July. They'll go May, April, is that correct?
Yes.
Other districts you've dealt with. And then, of course, Doug worked with Kennewick for quite a few years, and so Kennewick usually bid out where their schools would be, 13 to 15 months, I believe, for elementary schools somewhere in there.
It's only one has to do with OSBI's funding, and that's the least data points. And so it's always safer if you wait until after July, especially if you're not funding the entire project. You guys, we, however, have bond money sitting there.
Right.
And so we should be funding the project, and we should realize that savings. We don't need to wait until July. We have, it's not empirical data, but we have strong evidence of our own experiences, plus we've interviewed multiple contractors, that even though there might be competition, we know in the springtime, contractors are hungry. They want to line up their next year's worth of work. And so they're eager, and, and they bid like they're hungrier, because they don't know what's out there. When you get to July, a lot of times, people have lined up...
Their books are full.
And so there's, there might be less competition, however, you might have contractors that aren't as hungry.
Yeah.
And so there's not, it doesn't necessarily create a better bid environment. We believe, and I think we could fill in multitude of contractors, and they tell you that they would prefer to bid in the springtime, and that you are going to get a better number bidding in the springtime.
So, so middle school four is going to bid in the spring. When was, when Stevens going to bid? Is it going to be?
No, not Stevens.
That would be in the summer.
Stevens would, Stevens would be in the summer. So keep in mind, while we're still talking funding, we still need to spread out the, the state match so that we can still pay the bills. That's why we can't just grab everything and say, well, let's just move it all up to March, and then we'll get good bids on everything, because the funding won't support that.
And elementary 17, is that going to bid in summer as well?
No, we're thinking about May.
Okay. So we'll have over a year to build that elementary school?
Yes.
Okay. And then state match, how are we looking on state matches? Are we going to get all the state match we anticipated? Have we seen anything on that? Do we...
We're going to try to get every dime. We're going to get every dime.
So we get every dime and then an extra $30 million?
Yes, that's, I have to say, you know, I was working with Doug and Kevin Sullivan and Kevin Hebden and Jody, and we were going over all the funding and OSBI funding, and Jody's, Jody works with us, and she's very aggressive about getting every dollar we can get. So, yeah, I'm confident we'll get all the money we can. Now, that being said, we're always looking at, we just got our OSBI, or, excuse me, our October enrollment counts. We're going to work with OSBI to look at that and see if that bumped up any of our eligibility. If it didn't, there's more dollars there, we'll take a look at that.
I know in the past, we've typically gotten more from the state than we estimated, hopefully.
So we'll continue. We won't find that out, that'll, we won't get that information probably until, takes OSBI a while, because they put those numbers together till December, but somewhere December, January, we should have that information.
So to summarize that, so that's actually an area where we are in good shape always, because conservative estimate for this, the labor, the increased escalation that surpassed our estimates, but as far as enrollment, that's an area where we're going to benefit, because we, the match, for people that aren't aware, the, the match, you know, is based on your need, and, and so if we have a huge increase in enrollment, then that increases our perceived need. So at least from that standpoint, we should be getting more than we anticipated, correct?
Correct. But if we submitted a year early, we don't get that extra year of enrollment. Is that, is that correct? I mean, not, not that we won't get it eventually, but it's, plus if they go to modify these formulas. Now, I don't know how quickly that will happen, but, but...
So what you're saying is we don't trust the government to do the right thing?
Well...
And go back, so...
So you look at the two neighboring districts, they've done pretty well. It's, it's our turn, darn it. But, anyway. All right, any other questions? If not, we're done early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Randy, and thank you for coming. Our construction team.